Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. Here is the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance led by our Mr. Ryan. Allegiance, United States of America, to the public which it stands, nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you all please remain standing, like to have a moment of silence for the people in Texas who've lost their lives from Hurricane Harvey. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for pay, excuse me, playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion as are other recently recorded meeting and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda, we have open forum, we have the Rockland Freedom Walk, and is Matthew Rogers available?
Hello, my name is Matt Rogers and I am here to request permission to have a remembrance walk for those who lost their lives on 9/11. This walk was started in 2008 by Ryan Burns. This year I have taken over for Adam Royal, who has run it since 2011. The walk will be held on Monday, September 11, 2017, and take place at the Bison Tenille Track on Reed Street from 5:00 PM until 7:00 PM. I would like to invite everyone to join us on September 11.
Very well done.
Good job. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for taking it all.
I'll make a motion to approve, and thank you, Mr. Rogers. Second. Great presentation.
All those in favor? See unanimous vote? Thank you and good luck.
So we need more young people to step up.
Next up on the agenda, well, before we get into the agenda, I want to make note that we have a couple retirements, but they're going to be postponed to the September 19th meeting. There was a couple of conflicts with some people getting here. So, the minutes, open session minutes of August 1st, 2017.
Posen to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah, if you have the same. Mr. Chairman, I was in here.
Okay, so we have four and one abstention. Under unfinished business, we have Community Preservation Committee, item number three. Mr. Chalka.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to, in my comments later on, I will be discussing very briefly the fact the Attorney General has returned, approved all of the articles that happened at our Maytown meeting. One of the articles was the Community Preservation Act. So as that gets implemented by the town, we need to establish a committee. We accepted the recommendation of the state in formatting that committee, and that will have a number of members. There'll be nine voting members, as was approved by town meeting and at the ballot. There'll be one member of the Planning Board, one member of the Conservation Commission, one member of the Historical Commission, one member of the Park Department, one member of the Housing Authority Board, and four members at large to be determined by the Board of Selectmen. There are varying terms on all of these, but as we go forward, we need to begin preparation. And while there is no rush today, there's no money to expend, and there won't be any money to expend until next year or possibly the year after, because we have to bring it in, have it certified by the Department of Revenue. Then that committee would meet in the next fiscal year to make recommendations to the following town meeting. We should be establishing the committee as they begin to get forward, go forward and make plans as to where they would like to designate some of the money. As you know, some of the money goes to housing, some to recreation, open space. There are decisions to be made by the community, and it should not be taken lightly. This is still people's tax dollars, so there's no rush to create this committee, but during the fall, we should be soliciting from those other committees as well as making a determination what the makeup of that board should be. So while it requires no action of the board tonight, I would like to ask through the board that we solicit volunteers to make known their applications, and we'll be asking the other committees to make their appointments. This doesn't have to be done in two weeks.
No, but I'd make that motion. And in making it, I would like to ask the people of Rockland, you know, we always have the same people all the time on all these committees. We need new people, younger people, older people, I don't care what you are, but just new ideas, and take a fresh look at the town of Rockland and through the eyes of the future and what, how this committee can be used to preserve part of the past and the open space type of things, but still go forward. So I would just, I would hope some new people would come out and, people that haven't been on committees before, to have some expertise in any of this stuff, and please come out and join us.
It's recreational open space, it's housing, and it's historical, and those three categories are required, even if you don't spend the money in one particular year. A minimum of 10% of the funds accumulated in any one year gets segregated, separated, and held for that specific purpose. So you could accumulate money in the housing portion, for example, and not do anything with it for four or five years. But those are determinations to be made at a minimum in each one of those categories by town, and it requires a town meeting vote. The committee ultimately will make recommendations to the town. The town has to approve those recommendations.
So we have a motion? Yeah?
Sorry, I just wanted to speak prior to the motion relates to it somewhat. When we're looking for volunteers, one of the things that's great about Rockland is that we've already established a housing plan, we've already established some open space type work, and so the first charge, the first, the first obligation that this committee would be charged with under the statute is developing a plan, a community preservation plan. And Rockland's already put a lot of the building blocks in place for that by coming up with all these individual plans for recreation and open space and our affordable housing plan. So a lot of the hard legwork has already been done. It's going to be on building what our volunteers have already done. So I don't want people to be scared off because it is, does cover a wider range of different things, but we, you know, our town's been great putting those building blocks together in advance. So I think, I think it'll be a good opportunity for new people to come out and start building off the good works of the people before them.
We also have the committee I'm a chairman of for the park recreation that's going to do an open, a master.
Open space.
Yeah, open space plan or whatever, whatever you used to call it. But anyway, no, we're working on it. It's just, again, it's, the state's working with us, and basically they come down and they'll basically write the whole plan for us, and we got a great guy Ralph who comes all the time and does a great job for us, but we just, we'll put in our input that says, you know, this is what we're thinking about, this is what we'd like to do, and they put it into the state's words, if you will, so that we have something in place and the state is happy.
I should point out to the board, and I have spoken with the state already, there is an effective date that essentially says 30 days after the Attorney General has approved it. However, they said that's not really hard and fast as long as we're making progress. So I would even recommend that if we don't have the right volunteers or the volunteers, you know, if you wish to stay open at this point, because tonight we're announcing the Attorney General's approval and do some appointments in two weeks, I mean, two meetings. Give yourself some time to solicit, ask, and get volunteers, as well as the other committees, certainly without that time. It does not say that all appointments have to be made, but initial appointment should be made, so we're showing progress towards that.
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. One, in terms of are the other members who, of were designated by other boards, like are they being notified in writing?
Yes.
That they're being asked? And just to make it very clear to the public, this board has like four members at large as well, so if anyone at home is interested, conserving on the Community Preservation Committee, like apply to the Board of Selectmen to be one of the four slots that will be appointed by this board. So I just wanted to make that all clear. There are some boards and, and committees in town that will appoint, I can remember on their behalf, and then this board will have four members who are appointed at large, so.
The terms are specified as well in the initial committee. You know, what they're trying to do is get similar to a Board of Selectmen, revolving, revolving membership, so we will work with all the committees.
We had a second. Do you have a motion?
I did.
Okay, second.
They did, did you say?
Did your second, did?
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor? So unanimous vote, so. And if we can get the info up as well, Dave, that would be helpful for people to understand what the makeup would be. Under new business, item number four, we have two one-day liquor licenses for the Double Tree.
No hearing required. They're looking to do some outside receptions from 5:00 to 8:00 on two different dates. One is on Monday, September 9, and the second was on Wednesday, I believe, September 13.
Okay, because we have one on the book, the 11.
The 11 is one.
One says 9/11.
9/11.
9/11 and 9/13.
Yep. Yeah, they're both in there.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor? Let's see unanimous vote, thank you. Item number five, change of beneficial interest, the 99 Restaurant.
Included in your book is just the applicant information. Occasionally, as you know, different companies or whatever, they, they change hands or there are different people, they're just changing the beneficiary. In this case, the 99 Restaurants of Boston is seeking to change their beneficial interest. Now, exactly what that means, and I don't believe there's an attorney here tonight, is there? On behalf of 99? It's not unusual that they come forward. The application, I have been told, is complete. You get to review the record, and they are just changing their interest to a manager, Catherine Tuohy.
Posen to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? To vote.
Item number six, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Okay.
JJ's backyard grilled the application is almost complete, but not complete. I would ask that we postpone this till the next meeting. I have spoken with the petitionaries trying to secure a site.
Okay, so.
Motion at table?
Second.
All those in favor? Let's see unanimous vote. Item number 10, Town Administrator's Report and Correspondence. Mr. Chalka.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a number of things, and I know it's been a month since we've A couple of these have come up as a result of summers aren't so short. But we are seeking to establish a committee for the Park Department. Eric Hart has done a great job with the initial RFP and going through getting someone to design the new stadium project, and he's had some advice, but he feels as though now to go forward and have these people participate that we should be establishing a committee. And while they were not formally appointed, Eric just had to follow the procurement process. But from within different committees here in town, the people that have been working on behalf of the school, Mark Schrom, Joe Reese from the Park Department, Peter Yule, the Park Department Superintendent, Vincent Fontaine, the new Veterans Agent on behalf of the Veterans at Large, John Melvin here in town, John Rogers, the Ever Ready Bunny here in Rockland, and certainly Eric. I would like to establish an ad hoc committee, and certainly anyone else would like to participate if they want to make themselves known. It's not, it's not so exclusive that we wouldn't have more participation, but we should be establishing a committee at this point for the Veterans Stadium renewal.
Any discussion?
A quick question, like would this be for, and this, this would be for everything, including the procurement, or the procurement already happened?
We did the procurement for, for architectural services.
Okay, so there's everything else to come.
Right. But now we want to proceed.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? See unanimous vote?
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to announce that the Institute of Municipal Clerks, on behalf of the Board of Directors, it is my pleasure to inform you, Donna Shortall, that you have been awarded the International Institute of Municipal Clerks designation of Certified Municipal Clerk. In light of the speed and drastic nature of the change, changes these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all local government to keep pace with the growing demands. And that is signed by Mary Kaiser. It's part of the program that, and it happens especially when you have a new clerk or treasurer or collective, they don't come in certified already. They have to then go out and actually get the education and get certified, and so I'm pleased to announce that Ms. Shortall has, in addition to lowering the number of unlicensed dogs in town, has paid strict attention to, to gaining her certification as a municipal clerk. So we're thrilled. I understand with Donna, like 50 unlicensed dogs in town, and there used to be hundreds. So they've done a great job, the office as a whole. I mentioned earlier, the Attorney General has approved the articles that were before us at town meeting. We have to forward all articles, planning, et cetera. So we've received that. The new Council on Aging Van made its first appearance last Thursday at the Council on Aging on Plain Street. It's beautiful. It will be in operation, we believe, later this week, because some of the drivers still have to get their final certification and training done on it. But it's a $62,000 van that we get because of our participation with the Department of Transportation and Bat Bus Services. So I think it cost the town a little over $2,000 to have it personalized to Rockland Blue and say the Rockland Council on Aging and have our number on it. But the seniors were very excited, and we even tested the wheelchair ramp before we put anybody on that. We made sure we put Andy Triana-Fellow on it. We raised him, he made it in, he made it out, it works fine. So it was a good day, and I know Peg is very happy about it. To anyone who's interested, the Lieutenant Governor is visiting us on Wednesday for about an hour in the afternoon. We'll be downstairs in the conference room and going over all of the things we have accomplished as a result of our participation in the Community Compact Grants. That included a housing production plan, IT upgrades, and we'll be working with Lieutenant Governor on getting some more initiatives accomplished. So that's 2:30 here at Town Hall. We're anxiously awaiting word on a grant for the rail trail as we continue to try and complete that. We had a grant request in for the third of the trail that goes from the Senior Center through Abington, and we've met with Hanover to work on possibly doing the other end of the trail as a grant request next year. Want to remind you that the Farmer's Market has a couple of weeks left. The last Farmer's Market is September 15, Fridays, 3:00 to 7:00 here on Town Hall Plaza. And I want to remind the public that we are back to Monday through Fridays, 8:30 to 4:30 is regular hours, and we are here until 8 o'clock on the First and Third Tuesdays. It seems like summer flew by and we're back to our, our 10-month winter schedule, so the public should be pleased to know that they can get any business done they need to with any town office until 8 o'clock on the First and Third Tuesdays. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the extent of my remarks. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up, we have Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, I'll start off with Mr. Loughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I attended the Rockland Cares vigil with Selectmen Mullen. It was a really kind of a sad evening. It was attended by almost 500 people. It was a nice gathering. The speakers this year, they were all from Rockland. They provide some great insight into how the disease affects the addict, but also as well as the family members of those that are struggling through addiction. I just want to thank all the members of Rockland Cares for all they do for the community and for putting on such a special night of remembrance and reflection. You know, if anyone's looking to get involved, I mentioned this at the last meeting, go to the Rockland Cares website, www.rocclandcares.org, and, and sign up. It's a really good community group. I think they meet once or twice a month for an hour or so. And it's, again, it's an important issue within our town. Couple other things that I've been working on over the last few weeks. I've reached out to a few businesses about possibly coming into Rockland. Unfortunately, to this point, we're not, we haven't been very successful in that effort. One of the businesses thanked us, you know, thanked me for, for reaching out, and they were excited by what we're trying to do. They're just not at this time looking to expand, but hopefully just having the conversation, I spoke to them for about 20 minutes, so hopefully just having the conversation has planted the seed that, you know, maybe a year down the road, they are looking to expand and we might have, you know, something uptown. There are two other businesses that continue to be interested, and they're at varying states of, of making it happen. So hopefully we'll start seeing some business uptown, some new businesses uptown. I've also been working with the town accountant, Eric Hart, on a five-year financial plan for the town. We met with representatives of the Commonwealth last month who be working with us, and they're putting together some, you know, basic financial principles as well as trying to project the town's finances over the next five years, so more to come.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
I wanted to thank Robert Whitman, who's the owner of Social Taekwondo, for putting on the end of the summer concert, as well as some of the other sponsors. I don't know them off the top of my head, but my husband was able to attend. I wasn't able to, but apparently it was a good take. Most people enjoyed themselves, and I think that was the third one. Love to see a few more. When I was at the Farmer's Market on Friday, I noticed that there was a sign up for Girl Scouts, and my family is actively involved in both scouting for Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts, so I wanted to give some information on signups for kids who are interested. If you're interested in signing up for Girl Scouts, you can come down here to the Farmer's Market, they can help you out. I think they're here the next two weeks. Or you can go to G S E M A dot org, stands for Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts dot org. And we have one local Cub Scout PAC, rocklandpac12@gmail.com is their email address if you want to get in touch to sign up for that. And the third thing I wanted to address was we, we were notified by email regarding a moratorium for water. I think it's great, Vice Chairman Mullen has reached out to the local business community in regards to reimagine Rockland, and Selectmen Alaflan is reaching out to businesses to want to, you know, try to stir up some interest coming in here. But we were, when we were notified from the, from the water superintendent in regards to a moratorium on water, there's some concern about being able to provide water service at an increasing level. And they're looking into ways to, to do that, to, to increase our supply so that we can keep up with potential demand. It's temporary, but I'd like to hear more about it. I don't know much about it. I haven't heard anything other than that email. I would love to get them in here. I'm going to ask the chairman if we can probably put that on the agenda coming up next, next meeting. We're all making efforts, we're all working hard, we're all volunteers to really move this community forward, but if we don't have the infrastructure underground to make this happen, it goes nowhere. So we need to know what's going on with our infrastructure. We need to know what the alternatives are to ensure that water supply is sufficient for the goals that we have for, for this town. And I want to, I want to get whoever's involved in directing that policy in front of us to tell us what their thoughts are. I mean, they may not have answers yet, and that's okay, but I'd like to know what their thoughts are. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Is that a few?
That's it, thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Ryan?
Water delivery is the issue with that, and I've been looking into it toward Mr. Cormier, who was one of the water commissioners. I went with him when he did the tour of the place, and, and there's plenty of water. It's just getting it from there to here is the problem, so. I've talked to Marcy and you, Alan, and everybody about, you know, looking for grant money or whatever to increase the amount of water that we can deliver. That's the, it's not the amount of water we got, it's can we deliver it? And that's the issue. So I hope they rectify that pretty soon and the town of Rockland can go on. The fishing derby we have every year is, looks like it's in jeopardy. The pond has not gone down any, there hasn't been any lowering of the waters and springs, so there's no beach really to fish on, and the, and I can't, not going to put 100 people in a little area.
I can say to that, if I could.
Sure.
I don't want to interrupt the remarks. You know, we are working closely with the Rep. and Senator. It is on the agenda with the Lieutenant Governor tomorrow about having the boards removed. Everyone has agreed that Department of Transportation has recognized that the dam is their issue.
Right.
I have asked the Lieutenant Governors, the Governor's Office, Senator Keenan, and Representative DeCose, all to try and see who they can get at this state to take on the removal of the boards and the lowering of the water. I know it's of concern for the people upstream. I also know it's of concern for the people downstream in dealing with Highway Superintendent Dave Taylor. So I didn't want people to think that this has gone by the wayside. We have had more rain than usual. The other thing is, you can't just release a deluge of water downstream, so we want to make sure that the engineering, the okay, the rate at which we lower the water doesn't cause us other issues. So we are addressing it. It is front and center as an issue we deal with weekly here at the Town Hall, so.
Hopefully by spring it'll be set, we'll be all right.
Isn't this the pond on the agenda tonight?
No. I was told it was. By Alan.
No, no, updates. We, we do updates all the time, but it's.
Didn't I get an email from you telling me it was on the agenda for tonight?
No.
That's why we're all here.
I apologize if you're all here for that, but what I have said to you in emails is that I will continually update the board. Certainly you can see the updates. I do get a couple of inquiries here and there, but it's one of the things we're trying to address. We can't just remove the boards.
No, but didn't you tell me that the DOT is taking responsibility for the dam?
I did, the DOT.
And that there's a study being made for the people up on the base, the buildings being made up on the base, and you told me it was being on the, on the agenda for tonight? That's why we're all here.
I, I did not.
I don't think I misunderstood.
I think, I think you certainly did, but.
Well, I can say I've been talking with the, with L-Star regards to drainage. I met with them, I want to say the end of July, and they were getting together some CAD documents for me, they're going to make them, and they asked me what date would be a good date to deliver them to me, and I said the end of August. We haven't touched base yet, so I haven't seen them. I anticipate seeing them, but all they're giving me at this point, if, I don't know if this might be what you're thinking about, all I've asked for at this point is their catchment areas, where their outfalls are. I'm looking at, I would like to see pre-development catchment areas, which catchment areas just means where the rainfall falls and then where, on what areas get directed to which outfalls. And then post-development to see if there's a difference to see, because potentially it looks like, because there's been some grading changes, that although the runoff may be the same, there's three different outfalls, and it could have potentially changed the amount going to each outfall. So if you, if you think about it, you know, in percentages, maybe it was 33, 33, 33 hypothetically, and now it's 40, 40, 20 or something. When I spoke to the engineer, he said that could potentially be true. So we're looking at that, but I, I can't speak to the factual certainty of that until I get that documentation. So I am waiting for that, but it's not a study, it's really just looking at, at as built records and past records. But that's where you have to start.
All right, well, our concern is we're coming into hurricane season. And if we ever storm like we've had in the past, as homeowners on the pond, we're looking at major problems. looking at major problems. Our trees are already dying. The trees are, Betsy has lost 50 feet of her backyard. All of our trees are under, are in the water.
I think.
And we were told in April that this would be addressed in April and August.
In July and August.
By the end of the summer.
In the dry season.
For now, the DOT is working on it.
Right. We don't have, we don't have permission to do it.
But in April, nobody knew who was doing it.
We don't, we don't have permission to do it.
We got it at one. Board of Sleckman always had control over raising and putting boards in.
And then, for whatever reason, you guys decided.
The illegal boards that were put in to protect the people downstream, why can't they illegally disappear, go back to normal?
And protect the people upstream. We all pay taxes.
Well, because then you're going to release two feet of water downstream, which is, I know, right, freak the people downstream, right?
Well, no.
Well, it's either them or us, right? Are they here?
Well, call the state. The state, we just gave you the.
We've already called the state. We've already had two representatives involved.
Then show up tomorrow with the, when the, when the lieutenant governor's here, and tell him your problem. They'll all be here.
I called the governor.
It's a her.
I called the lieutenant governor. I called the Department of Transportation.
Seriously, you guys, you know what's been going on a long time, okay? And you know, we had this problem 20 years ago. We're kind of tired of it. We pay our taxes. When I, when I built my house, I was told my deck had to be 50 feet from the pond, so I had to put my deck like this, in an angle. You know how close my, my deck is to the pond now? 20 feet.
But now we know who's responsible for it, and they're working on it.
How, how, how did you lose responsibility for it in a 20-year span?
We never really had it.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. We were here. We know you did.
No, you didn't, because I was here since the 96, and I gave the order to clean out the stream the first time during the 10, during the 10-inch.
You absolutely had control in the 80s. You might have come in 96, in the 80s, when Gerald, Gerald Gell Pratt was here. He definitely had.
He raised that 20, 20 inches.
We were all here, because we had the same fight 25 years ago.
He didn't have permission to. So, what have we got to do with him?
I think, I think what we need to do, instead of, instead of having a shot.
Come on, you know, it's like.
We've identified the fact that the state has taken ownership of the dam. That's an issue. As Mr. Chalka mentioned, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito is due into this, actually, the room downstairs, tomorrow afternoon.
What time is that? I'll be here.
Between, I believe it's 2:30, 2:30 and 3:30.
There you go.
She's here for an hour. Please come, okay? I intend on being there as well, all right? It's one of these things where we have to pressure the state. We've worked with our Senator John Keenan. We've worked with our state rep, Dave DeCoste. We've actually got them to actually recognize the fact that the state has control, and it's their project. It's a $6 million project, okay? The town doesn't have, that's what it's going to. Six million dollars to repair the dam is the current estimate.
And that's the reason Rockland relinquished control, period, okay? Rockland always had control.
Rockland has not always had control.
They didn't want to spend the money, so they said they don't have control, period.
Rockland has not always had control.
That's not true. Not true, because years ago, when Brad Clamp was here, him and I went to the state, because they told us they were going to fire, find us $1,000 a day, because we, because we weren't fixing the dam. And then we found out that they own, they own the dam.
We have articles in the paper that Rockland had control. We know you did. We know you did.
Well, I'm just telling you, if you thought we did, we didn't, all right? Legally, we did not. So, whether we did stuff illegally in the past, doesn't make any difference anymore. We've identified the problem. We've identified who owns it. We've gone to the state. We've told them what we need to do. We told them how important it is to the town of Rockland, and like the state always does, they drag their feet on everything. So, you go down tomorrow, and you, and you get on the state people and say, "Look, you know, the town says that, that we tell them the town owns it, but they tell us you own it. But who the hell's going to do the job and get it done? Want to go yell at people, come down and yell at them, because we're doing everything that we can to get the thing done. We're not, we're not dragging our heel, and we're not just ignoring it either."
State and federal government. They've even called the federal government. Nobody wants to hear anything.
Of course they don't, because it's going to cost $6 million, if the state owns it.
Mr. Chalka?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, and you're right, government does move slowly, but we have gotten the Department of Transportation, number one, they are somewhere between 25 and 50 percent planned towards their solution. We have gotten the Department of Transportation to say that the dam is there. Quite honestly, when they built this, whether, whether the dam itself is six inches or nine inches in Rockland, and not in the layout of the highway, or whatever, it is all one superstructure. The governor's office has recognized that. We also haven't gotten, we asked the state to give us a waiver if we remove the board for any liability downstream. DCR wouldn't give us that. The silence has been deafening. However, through the office of Senator Keenan and Representative DeCoste, they did get the Department of Transportation to say it's irresponsible. As little as a week ago, I've been on the phone with the state rep and the state senator to say, "Now, we need somebody to go in and remove the boards." I know it's higher than it has been in the past. It's affecting these people's yards. It's affected your fishing derby. I do believe that it's a limited amount of money that goes over that dam. Somebody put the boards in, and when those boards are removed, it'll go down to that level. I can't imagine, barring four inches of rain, four feet of rain like Houston, that this is going to go up further. It also affects our sewer plant. We can't afford to have it go up further. It'll go over the catchment area at the, at the sewer plant. Someone put boards in. I don't know who it was, in us. We don't have the equipment, the personnel, the engineering.
With the liability protection.
Yes, liability.
We don't have. Is the process moving excruciatingly slow? Yes, but it's moving.
Why don't we have the equipment? The highway department always used to take out the boards.
Yes, they did.
The highway department, according to, if, I'll answer the question if you give me the opportunity.
I will.
Okay. So, ages ago, I asked the same question of Bob Corby when I first got here, nine years ago. So, number one, some of that equipment may not even be here anymore. But Bob Corby, when I said, "Should we lower the dam?" Because we were anticipating a storm at that point, a hurricane, and he said, "We're not allowed to touch it." So, whether or not, there's been back and forth between the state and the town as to who owns it, and if you go back through the deeds, there's a ton of documents. The town was told not to touch the dam, and Bob Corby, even at that point, said he wouldn't touch it, and I've been here nine years. So, we don't have the equipment, the ability, nor, according to, going back to Bob Corby, the right to touch the dam.
No. Can I just say something? You said, "We don't have the right," but you also said before, "We don't have the ability."
I, I don't.
Do we not have the equipment anymore, or?
What, what equipment is it that you're looking for?
A backhoe? I don't know, Dave. We've seen them do it. They just go in there with the backhoe, and they lift the board. It's not subject to appeal.
If you lift that, if, number one, we don't have anyone, I believe, on the department to do it, one. Two, the liability of lifting that board and the impact downstream. When we asked the state, if we were to attempt it, would they waive, would they give us a grant, you know, waive liability for anything that happened downstream? And the silence was deafening. They did not give us that waiver of liability. So, even if we could go in and pull the board.
What about the liability for us? What about?
Right now, you have, the water level's a little higher. You're not flooded up.
A lot higher. We're not flooded up.
We go, we go.
We have to, but the liability issue, there has to be an act. So, if we remove the boards, an act, and it causes damage, our act causes damage, you know, we potentially have.
You allow the board to be put in there.
Who, who?
It was, it was not.
The board was put in there.
By, by the, by, by Rockland?
By illegally.
By, by the town, by, by an agent of the town. See, that's the thing.
Illegally, by somebody who, and I don't know who did it.
So, that was an act, correct?
But it's not the agent, unless, no.
You're allowing the act to.
Only if it was an agent of the town. So, if an agent of the town pulls that board, and it causes damage, there's potential liability to the town for any damages downstream. Now, if, I, I, we would have to, before we did something like that, really do our due diligence, before we go in and just pull a board. You'd have to get an engineer in there to measure how much water is there, and the elevation, and the meandering of the stream, and you're talking extreme costs.
And we were told in April, April 12, I believe, that this would be taken care of by the end of the summer. I believe it came from you, Mr. Ryan.
And I talked to, and I went to the highway superintendent, and I expressed my desire to have the thing lowered sooner than that. And I've said it all the time, but unfortunately, we're hamstrung by the state.
I, I certainly, I certainly wanted it down and said, "I would hope that we would do it this August." And we are trying to force the hand.
We can flood upstream, but not downstream.
I'll finish my sentence, if you don't mind. We're going to attempt to force the state to do what they should do.
Right.
But we can't just arbitrarily do that.
So, you allege that somebody illegally put a board in the dam.
Do you know who put the board in?
No, I don't.
We don't either.
And so, you can't fix it. If somebody went and burnt down the fire department?
If somebody went and burnt down.
Did you do anything, or?
If somebody went and burnt down a state building, then the state would be responsible for it. That's not a town thing. That is the state thing. And that's, unfortunately, that's the way it is. And we've gone, bent over backwards, and not one person on this board has not been involved in talking to these people to get it done. And you talk to the state, it's like talking to that picture over there.
Well, Larry, that's a whole different issue, because we can debate who owns the dam.
The state owns the dam, and tomorrow, you come down, and you see the lieutenant governor, and you tell her that you're sick and tired of having your house look like, and listen taxes. Now, what are you going to do for us? Just tell her. I mean, that's, that's all we can tell you to do, because that's what we're doing.
Who's going to come out and clean it up?
We tell them, we tell them, once a week, we talk to them.
Dead trees in the pond.
She's over them. She talks to them. Ed talks to them. He talks to them. We talk to everybody involved, and DeCoste, and Keenan, and it's, and they're dragging their feet. So, if you want it to mount, then yell, come down, yell tomorrow, because that's the, the state owns it.
It's a compound problem.
It is.
The issue you have is, not that we're not cognizant of the fact that you have liability and you have potential damage to your homes, okay? You've got the people downstream, as well as the roadway, okay? So, the state looks at it this way. If somebody was to take those boards out, could it potentially damage the roadway? Then what happens then? What happens to the dam? There's also been some remedial work done downstream as well, because people down in the Wyman's Field neighborhood, where that stuff goes through, they've had some drainage issues as well. So, some of those were simple fixes that have been taken care of, that once the state says, "Okay, we'll give you a waiver, we can remove the board," and then some of this pressure will be alleviated, without hopefully doing further damage down to other people. Nobody likes to hear the fact that you have water. Nobody likes it, okay? We don't like the fact. We don't want to see you here complaining about it. We're trying to fix it as well. It took a tremendous amount of effort just to get the state to recognize the fact that, and take ownership. I mean, for, for what that is, it's a lot, because the state now has to queue that up in order to get the engineering done and get it in for budget. And the state, and the, and the state is at least taking those initial steps. I can't tell you when the funding's going to be available for that, because all this goes through, when they do their budgets at the end of the year, if they don't have enough money, they prioritize projects, and certain projects get higher priority than others. And I'm not saying it's not a priority to you folks, and I'm not saying it's not a priority to the town. But unfortunately, the state looks at things across the state as a whole and says, "This, this, and this, these are more important. These things go here." You take a look at that little overpass that was in Hanover that took three years to do an overpass. That's the state in action, or inaction, if you will. All we can do is say, "Can we do this or not?" We're pressing them for that, okay? I ride by that pond every day, if not, once, twice, three, or four times a day. I always look over, there's a manhole out there, okay? We've been explicitly told that that manhole, if the water gets too close to the manhole, our sewer plant is in jeopardy. That affects the entire town, not just you folks who are here in the audience, but the entire town. So, we are aware of the problem. We're trying to fix the problem. But having a shot match, us up here, back and forth, you know, tit-for-tat, it's not going to solve the problem. We're trying to solve the problem professionally. We're trying to do it in a manner that's not going to do damage to any other residents either. I mean, I don't want to see your homes damaged. I don't want to see anyone else's homes downstream damaged. I mean, it's, it's not right for anybody. We're trying to figure out the best way to get the state to do it. And again, if you have time tomorrow, any of you's got time tomorrow, please come down. It's right here in town hall, in the room down below.
What time?
2:30.
Can I ask you, where the $6 million figure came about?
What's that?
Where did the $6 million price tag come about?
That came from the state.
The dam, the dam itself is not just, the dam itself.
So, they already did a study and motion request, and what needs to be done?
No, what the state has said, they believe it's going to be $6 million. By the time.
Because they have to replace that stretch.
By the time it's done, and maybe put into place, it could grow to 8 million. It could be the big dig, for all we know. So, what they're saying is, we believe the problem is a $6 million problem today. If it takes them a year or two to fund it, or it takes them the next fiscal year to fund it, and then the construction doesn't start, that could be two years old. With escalation, it could be another 15, 20, 30 percent. It could be another $1.8 million. It could be potentially $8 million.
Yeah, it is.
It is, it is, and that's part of the problem, unfortunately.
But there's damage onto the street. Inside that tunnel, the big blocks, the big cement blocks are falling down, granite blocks, whatever. I was in there three or four years ago, when I was, when I was on the board before. Actually, went in the, in the dry season, went into the hole on the side, Amos Phelps, and went into the thing, and looked around, took pictures to see what the heck was going on, and what they were going to try to charge us for. And me and Bradley Plant, I was chairman at the time, we went down, and I hunted it down, and we found out the state owns it, because it was on a list of, of state dams. And we said, "Look, there it is, right there. It says, Dudley Pond Dam belongs to the state." And we, and as soon as we said that, we weren't getting charged a thousand dollars a day anymore. So I turned around and said, well, why don't we charge them a thousand dollars a day, put the ton of Rockland for every day they don't fix it? And you know where that's gonna go? You know?
As well-
They're just gonna turn around and say, well, we're not gonna give you any money there if you're gonna be browbeaters.
We're, we're looking at the problem upstream as well.
Right, right.
Before it gets to you folks, we're looking up there as well. We've asked for the data-
Mr. Ms. Hall, if you could just go up Route 18, stop at the bridge, get out, look over, there's pipes.
Yep, those are outfalls.
There's no retention basins.
There's one on the other side, so-
Well, it could be.
Yeah.
But there's pipes coming out right there at French Street. That's where French Street ends up there.
Yep, and, and that's what I got, they didn't even know where the outfalls were. I asked them, please give me a map of your outfalls. They didn't know where they were. That is bothersome and drove us to my-
I've lived on that pond thirty-three years. Twenty fifteen, the fall of twenty fifteen, I was talking and I got a, I got a paper line to Mr. Charker here. I've got pictures to him in fifteen, sixteen, and I brought pictures up here this year to show you people.
And I, and I understand that-
And nothing has been done.
And I, I understand that, and those pipe, I understand that there are pipes that come out into French Street, but there's also a lot of underground plumbing there that we can't see. So we, because it runs by gravity underground. So I need to know which areas on the ground, on surface elevation, drain where. And the only way I can figure that out is I need to see not only where the outfalls are, but I need to see all the pipe infrastructure, manhole infrastructure, elevation infrastructure, which can then divide out catchment areas. And once I can see that, we'll have a much better idea of how much rain is actually collecting in a one-inch storm, in a two-inch storm, in a three-inch storm. Because your big problem isn't necessarily total precipitation, it's the peak storms we're having. The intense rainfall that we're having in a very short period of time, that's the problem. So we need to figure out what is going into that retention basin, and, and they don't know right now until they can give me the, the records.
I suggest you go down to that dam and take a measurement. That dam tomorrow and the next day will never be as low as it is right now. And the board should have been jacked up a month ago. Put a brick under it, let the water out, and then just put a rope around it and pull it up. That's what should have happened, to protect us.
That was, that was my originally thing, I said, I'll go down and do it myself. But the fact of the matter is, I was told, no, we can't because it's the state. And I said, well, we'll go down in the middle of the night, just like the guy who put the boards in. But unfortunately, because I'm sitting here, if I do that, and the state finds out that I did it, and they're gonna say I did it in behalf of the board or anything else, then, then it's gonna throw everything back another ten years. Because they'll just flip the finger at us and walk away. Because that's what they basically do. And so we're fighting with them, we're fighting every bit with them as you are fighting with us tonight. Every single time they come by, I say to Mr. DeCoste, what's going on with the dam? Every time I see Mr. Keenan, Senator, what's going on with the dam?
I saw him in fifteen, he took pictures. He went down on the other side of that road.
I know, and they're banging their heads against the wall too.
He did nothing.
But they're banging their heads against the wall too because you have to now go to the next guy. And if the next guy doesn't listen to you.
Okay?
All due respect, Ms. Hall and Larry, you guys aren't civil engineers, it shouldn't be your job to be looking at the drainage. If the state owns it, then the owner should be on them to be providing that information.
Well, yes, they're gonna look at the structural issue of your, the culvert, the roadway, and the dam. But the upstream issue is more of our problem, right? That's our problem, that's not their problem. Their problem right now is just the dam and how it's functioning and whether it's functioning as intended. But it's go-
Well, no, the job should also be water coming into the pond that's going through the dam.
We own the pond, the pond is ours.
Well, I don't think that should matter.
It does, it does. So, so the upstream runoff is really our issue, it's less their issue. Unless for some reason, the amount of runoff is so significant that they have to change the, the design of the dam.
The dam is taking the runoff from upstream, so the whole thing should be their issue.
Not-
They should be looking at the whole picture.
They're, they're probably gonna replace it right now.
If you use that argument, they would say they own your house as well. And that's not the case. Unfortunately, it's ve- I don't wanna say it's complicated, but you have a piece, you have a piece that is the state, which is the primary piece, which is the dam and the fact that it runs under the roadway. You have you folks who are in a, in an area that is, we'll call it a pond, that seems to be overflowing or elevating because the water can't get out in a timely fashion. The concern is, is it elevating because we have something upstream, we don't know. And then B, if we were to let the dam boards down, what effect would that have downstream? Okay? And we're talking, now, we're only talking property and people who'll be affected. We haven't talked anything about ecology, the ecosystem, any of those other things that affect things when you start talking about sewerage. So it's very challenging, I guess is more the right word. And because you have a government that moves slow, I can tell you when I first got on the board, I thought it was gonna be a light switch, we get stuff done overnight. It doesn't work that way. We're still getting things done that were seven, eight years ago, it takes that long sometimes. And, and it's very difficult, believe me, I know. And I, I feel for you. I have a property out of state that has, subject to floods, and I've spoken to few people. I, I've been up there where the water's been eighteen inches over my dock. I've been up there, you know, where I'm fighting my flood insurance company so I can get, we'll say, relief because once we had those initial floods, my flood insurance went up four times in ten years. Four times. Okay? So if you're lucky enough to have, able to obtain flood insurance to protect yourself, what I'm saying, if you're lucky enough to be able to obtain it, now you take what just happened in Texas. We had unprecedented rainstorms, you lost life, you, you're still dealing with, that's gonna be years to clean that up. But you have, we'll say, a catastrophic incident, okay? And then if you're covered for it, fine. But now, if you have flood insurance elsewhere in the country, we're all gonna be paying the cost to clean that up for the people who are there. It, it, it just goes around. But state government, unfortunately, we have a senator, we have a rep, they have a certain area. There's other parts of the state, so every, it's almost like everybody bothers to take care of their area and then the body votes to see which projects go forward, which ones don't, if there's enough money allocated. If revenues are down, this project could be shelved. If revenues are up, even if it's a priority, if something else gets bumped, you take Route 18, you mentioned Route 18? Route 18 took four years, four years to get the funding. That was supposed to happen twenty years ago when the base was first proposed. So here we are twenty-four years later, it's finally starting. I, I hope that doesn't happen, all we can continue to do is suppress it.
You say you had eighteen inches over your dock, I had twenty-four inches over my dock, which I brought pictures up and showed you at the mark. That, that post is still there, you can go measure how many feet above the dock it is. So we were three feet above normal. That pond has been three feet above normal this year. And because of the illegal boards, it's never gonna go back. It'll never, that pond will never go back.
I think we all can agree the boards need to go, but we have to make sure we do, we have to make sure that there is-
Could you petition the Department of Transportation to remove a board?
We've asked them, we've asked them for a waiver, they deferred it to DCR, which is Department of Conservation. Okay? Because again, water, conservation.
This is Department of Conservation now?
No, they deferred it to Department of Conservation to ask them, because they're the experts on that. So what happens is, it's, it's, it's like we should go for a building permit. You go through, you know, you go through zoning, you go through planning, you go through conservation. Ultimately, the building department issues the building permit, but based on input from other departments. We're not doing the same thing with the state.
So DOT defers to DCR?
The Office of Dam Safety is under DCR. DCR handles conservation, recreation, all the rivers, waterways, conservation area.
And the best thing we can do is just come tomorrow-
Department of Transportation, if I, I, I'm trying to explain, so if you could stay with me here. Dam safety, it is a dam. The dam goes back and forth, across and under, and different roads. Department of Transportation owns that section of Route 123. So yes, both agencies are involved. Department of Transportation, DOT, has recognized that they own the dam. They are regulated on that dam by the Department of Dam Safety and the DCR. All of which is under the state government, which is why we went to the senator and the rep and we'll be talking to lieutenant governor and the governor's office and-
But if you have time, please come tomorrow.
Wait, so, so we asked the DOT to remove the board, and they deferred to the DCR?
Yes, because they're regulated by DCR.
And what did the DCR say?
I don't know if that's true. And, and trying to get an answer that we don't have. We have asked the state senator and the state rep to force the state to take some action. If DOT is saying the dam is theirs, then we've asked them to push them for the removal of the boards. Where it is past that today, I don't know.
So when you asked the DOT to remove the board, they said they were deferring to the DCR?
No one said that. What I'm telling you now is that's not what I know. I know that we have asked the senator and the rep to go to the Department of Transportation to get them or to try and push them to get the boards removed.
And have they done that?
Obviously, they haven't. That's where we're-
Obviously, they haven't?
They may have asked.
They may have asked.
And do we know, do we know the response?
If I can finish a sentence at any time, I mean, this is very argumentative, and arguing all day and all night, it's not, you certainly are. So let me finish a sentence and I will give you the answer, but I want to finish the sentence. I apologize, but I am not being, I am not being rude to you, I am not trying to interrupt you, but I am telling you that yes, it moves slow. Are we doing everything we can? We have asked the rep and the senator to talk to Department of Transportation and to push them towards removing the boards. That's exactly where we are today. We do not have an answer back. I can't say that they have talked to DCR, or the transportation has talked to DCR, or anything beyond. That is where we are today. We've got Department of Transportation to say it's their dam. And now we're trying to get the boards removed, we're trying to have them remove it. When we asked DCR, who asked us to remove the boards, we said we would consider it if they would waive liability.
I understand that.
We said, there was, and there was no response to that. Let it go on all the way back to April, and I know you have a copy of it, I sent it to you.
Now, keep in mind-
And when did we ask Senator?
Can we remove the boards, whether they remove them or have us remove them? But the boards need to be removed. And again, that's only a short-term solution, not a long-term solution. Okay? And we don't have that waiver back yet. So there's been no action-
You have a copy of the letter, I gave it to you in April.
So that was months ago.
Yes, it was.
And we followed up and asked for another, for, why haven't they responded?
We forwarded that letter to the senator and the rep.
You know, you know, each television station in the, in the Boston area has one of these public advocates who say, you know, WTF's all around here, why isn't things going on? And I would call a few of those, meet the lieutenant governor tomorrow and tell them you're gonna go to the, to the press and say, you know, here we are, where we're d- where we're-
Who can make the meeting tomorrow be advantageous?
Who do you think wants the board in to raise the water table in the area?
I have no idea who wants to put it in.
There's nobody on the pond to put it down.
No.
The only reason that would-
Somebody put it in, give it water table higher.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, putting that board in doesn't save the people downstream the same. I'll finish my sentence if you don't mind. It doesn't save the people downstream at all because it's the same amount of water going over.
Right.
That's right, once it gets to that level.
Once, once, once that board goes in, eventually the lake raises to that level and the amount of water that comes into that catch break or watershed area, it's the same amount of water that goes over. So putting that one board in does not save the people downstream. I don't know if somebody on the lake wanted it higher. I recognize none of you did, but I don't know if-
No way, nobody, no way.
What about down the right-hand corner where they, they want the water out?
If we knew who put it in, we would have been pursuing that. We have no clue who put it in, but somebody did.
That board cannot be put in manually. If you get out and look how white, how thick that board is.
I can absolutely guarantee you, it wasn't anyone with the town.
Those boards basically slide into no. I told them at the beginning, we'll take a wireline and we'll raise it up this much.
That's right. Put a shim, put a, put a shim in there, on both sides. Let the water go out at a slow rate.
I know, I know, but then, and it's still become liability.
And Senator Rehasha, Rehasha, come to the meeting tomorrow, emphasize the fact, make some time tomorrow, come down so we can get it in front of the governor, and, uh, the lieutenant governor, excuse me, and she can bring it back and hopefully she can get back to everybody with a solution. When she knows the people are there. It's a lo- it's a lot harder when you confront somebody face-to-face over an issue that's been dragged on. So please come tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay? And again, we're doing what we can to try to help. I don't want you to think you're being ignored because you're not. But it's a compound problem, it really is. And-
I know it's a compound problem, and I don't begrudge anyone downstream from being flooded out. I don't want to see anybody flooded out. And, you know, on the other hand, I don't want to see my basement flooded out.
Well, more importantly to me is we want to make sure that the sewer plant stays intact. That would affect the entire town.
Right.
Okay? So that's of the biggest grave concern there. And I'm not saying your problem's minimized by that, or the people downstream. But this would adversely affect our sewer plant, so it's very important to the town as well.
Well, when that board was out of there, it didn't do anything to the sewer plant in that one.
No, the board, if the water were to raise up another foot above that sewer cap that's there, then water will pour in there, the amount of water pouring in there will just close our sewer plant and the next thing you know, everybody's house is gonna be full of surge.
It's gonna be flooded with other things, and we don't want that happening.
Whoever the fool was, don't get me wrong, that, that put those boards in, we, we didn't put it in and it's no advantage to us even with the sewer plant. We want the boards reduced.
Right.
It's in our advantage. We, if, if the idiot who put the boards in put another board or two in, it could have flooded up the sewer plant. Luckily, it, it didn't reach that far. You know? So we don't, we didn't put the boards in for any reason whatsoever, it's absolutely no advantage whatsoever to the town. It was not the town who put the boards in. Did somebody put boards in? Yes, we've all agreed on that. Who's gonna take the responsibility for removing them, removing them safely and removing them so that there's no additional damage to anybody downstream? That's what we're trying to get DOR to do. We don't have the engineering services to get it done. DOT, DOT. We're trying to get them to do that. But it's not gonna be us that removes the board unless there's a waiver of liability and some sort of engineering to say, this is the process, an inch at a time, two inches at a time, half an inch at a time. I don't know.
But, but the whole problem here is, now the rainy season's coming. That pond will never be as low as it is today. Go down to market on the wall somewhere and see if I'm lying.
And we never said, we never implied that anybody was lying.
runoff from that base is from all that runoff. How come in twenty fourteen I didn't have a problem?
Like I said, I'm, I'm waiting to get information back from people.
Give me that answer.
We did also, we did also, I will say, we did also have a very, very, very rainy spring and, and we're getting a lot more-
In March of two thousand ten, we had two fifty-year storms in one week.
I live on West Water Street, my entire basement backyard was underwater, what was the pond level at that point?
The pond level got really high at one point because some of these-
But it went right down.
It goes right down.
Right, it went right down. Now it stays up for six, seven months at a time. That pond will never go down lower than it is right now.
The whole rest of the town is flooded, downstream, the pond is flooded.
We're gonna get one to three inches of rain and that will never be the same.
The other, the other issue is, and quite honestly, we have had more rain, and I think John Lofflin pointed that out from the Sewer Department, on the amount of rain that has come down is another fifty percent over what it was two years ago. This was an extremely rainy time. And the pond will come down when the boards are removed. And when the boards are removed, it'll be when DOT does it.
There you go.
But you feel that DCR is, got the volume?
DCR has input over DOT.
Okay.
Is what happens.
I, I, I won't say control, but there's-
Recommendation.
There's input. What happens is thing- Relying on the agencies.
I have a report with the guy, I sent him pictures. He sent me the pictures back and said, thank you for showing me the pictures. But we don't have anything to do with it.
They're talking to each other. DOT, as we have said, has accepted the fact that- And they're, they're in the process. I think they're twenty-five or fifty percent finished design. The state moves very slowly on all of these projects. It's under Route 23, which is a state road. There are issues with the spillway under the dam as well. At some point, it'll all be repaired by DOT and, and at that point, the boards, I assume, will be removed down to the level that was recommended, which is removing the two boards. But, you know, we can rehash this, you know, until midnight. It's still gonna come down to the fact that when DOT moves, they'll move. We're gonna try and pressure them to move as quickly as possible. But the town's not gonna remove those boards today without an engineer and/or permission and a way of reliability.
Come to the meeting tomorrow, please. Express your frustration, express the fact that you've sent pitches, you've sent inquiries to the state, and it's fallen on deaf ears. We've been at least able to have them acknowledge the fact that it's their problem. That was the biggest part to date. So I'm gonna continue with the meeting, thank you for coming and hopefully we'll see some of yous tomorrow, if not all of yous tomorrow.
Thank you.
Larry, you still have anything to finish, or?
Uh, no.
Mr. Mullen?
Have a lovely day.
Mr. Mullen?
I just have a few, I'll make these really quick. First of all, I actually agree very much with Al, Ms. Hall about the, our coordination and whatever our communication is coming from. Like I was just mentioning, that I agree very much with Al, Ms. Hall about any type of communication and the coordination coming from the Water Department about our, their most recent moratorium. Like as Deidre had mentioned, all of us are working together, many people working together to try to row in the same direction with developers, trying to attract businesses, really create an energy, like in some momentum, like in the downtown and, like in throughout town. And just, you know, oh, again, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, oh, you know, like some type of like status updates, maybe as things move along, like I know over the past year especially, things haven't been hunky-dory, but to go from, okay, we all realize generally there's an issue to a moratorium. Like I know it's month by month, or it is only for a month at this point, but to have some type of communication with this board, like I know there might be in other places, but with this board, I might think would be especially helpful right now. And to have either, I would like to officials on the Water Commission or the Water Superintendent at one of our upcoming meetings will be helpful, just so we're all, I won't say rowing in the same direction right now, but just so we're all going in the same direction. Al, on that note, I'll, I'll, the Reimagine Rockland Group, which is a really exciting, vibrant group, made up of arts and culture representatives, the Rockland Chamber, the social chamber. We've been having our meeting sessions throughout the summer. Next week, we'll be meeting with members of all the Rockland business community to talk about, I'd really ask them what recommendations, advice, and input they have to move our downtown forward and probably within, probably by the end of October, beginning of November, I actually, as part of the grant we received, will have, hopefully at that point, a final plan, which we're excited to present to the board and to continue moving forward. Lastly, a few weeks back, Chairman Kimball and I attended the zoning board meeting where originally the, the mobile- the, the, the mobile, our cell phone tower up, up off of Webster Street and off of White Road was going to be discussed. That hearing, I just want to make everyone aware, has, has been postponed till October tenth at, I believe, seven thirty P M. Probably as we get closer, there'll be a more concrete time, but October tenth, if anyone has any concerns, thoughts, input or otherwise about like a cell phone tower being constructed at the end of a residential neighborhood, I'll please write to the town clerk. I'll go show up on October tenth. The, the proposal, from everything I've read and talked with the neighbors about is pretty concerning, but it also appears that the town, in terms of dealing with the F C C and their rules and regulations, again, we're at the whim of others. But hopefully we'll, out of town, I will be able to have some input on most of ours residents in the process, in the process as well. So October tenth, I'm in this meeting room and we will see you there. So that's all I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make mention, if people were to write a letter, they should address it to the zoning board, okay? And they can send it to the town's clerk's office and they'll get it. And again, as far as the F C C and towers, there's different mandates and there's different requirements, so we are limited in our capacity of what we can and can't do. But the town does have some input that is weighed for decision in the future. So if someone has, as you said, concerns, they should try to attend the meeting or at least get a letter, you know, state their name and address so it can be read into the We've heard a lot of different things tonight about how issues can be emotional, depending upon which side of the issue you're on. Unfortunately for the folks who are here in the audience, this has been going on for a little bit of time with the water, but government does move slow. It does move, but it moves slow. And there's a lot more at stake here than just, I don't want to say a handful of residents around the pond. There's a neighborhood downstream that is much larger than that, as well as our sewer plant that we talked about. So we have been working on it. We're trying to find the best solution in a timely manner, but we also have to do what's practical for the town as a whole. So as much as that's hard sometimes to, to get that response when the problem's affecting you, I just want the people to know we're doing the best we can with it. We're fortunate that we don't have the rains that other parts of the country have had or the fact that Florida's going to be facing over the weekend. So we're lucky here that, you know, what we're talking about, maybe the, the pond going up a foot or two or something, you know, these people, these poor people in other parts of the country got five feet of rain, I mean, at once in a short period of time and the life was lost and things like that. Property can be replaced, life, that's irreplaceable. So I just want people to be cognizant of that. I know it's tough when it's yours and you have a stake in it, but unfortunately, sometimes things have to see their course. I attended a roundtable that Rockland Cares put on about a week prior to the vigil and the opioid crisis seems to have hit somewhat of a wall. It seems that the data from the state says that it's currently running, O Ds are running about five percent less than previous year. But the issue seems to be, according to some of the people who are at that roundtable, was Rockland Cares has a great job educating people and they probably won't know until years to come what's going to happen. It's the people who've already been out of school. It's the people who have already gone through college that they're trying to capture. Those are the people who seem to be O D'ing. And one of the, one of the other issues that was brought up in the meeting was the fact that they have some support programs in other communities. There's one in Plymouth, I believe, and one in East Bridgewater. And they're having difficulty because some of these people who are addicted to the opioids and drugs and whatnot have lost their license. They don't have ways to get to these support meetings to try to get them to be more productive and have some sort of network to get them out of their, we'll say their habits, their addictive habits. So it was, it was mentioned that these meetings are, I believe, two times a month and the thought was if we could provide some sort of transportation. So I immediately thought that we have the Bat Bus and we have some funding through the M B T A. So I don't know if something we can explore to look at, if we could explore the, expand in the Bat Bus to provide service to some of the people who are affected by this, as well as the family members, so that they can actually get their persons or the people that are affected to attend the meetings. So something, if we could look at that, might be something we could do. The other thing is, like anything with volunteers, volunteers come and go and they run their course, but the education component of it's very important. And I know that the town, we do put money aside. I know there's battered women shelter and things, if you look through our annual budget, there's funding that goes to that. It might be time that the town considers funding some educational process so that we can earmark funds because Rockland had twenty deaths, which for the area, we were fourth in the state. I mean, you got Springfield, Taunton, Somerville and you have Rockland. In per capita, Rockland was the highest per capita because we have the least amount of residents. These other areas I'm talking about are cities, if not large towns that are much like a city. So it, it's something that I, I don't know if we've solved the problem, but if we can help and if it's something we can have a mechanism with, if we can consider, you know, before we get into our next fiscal budget, talk to the finance committee, looking at ways so we can start to at least go through and put some monies aside to continue the educational piece. And I know there's members from the police department there, there's members from the clergy, members from the fire department, members from Plymouth County, Brockton, a lot of people who've experienced it and there's all sorts of things that happen if someone's O D. And now with Narcan and other drugs that reverse the effects of O D'ing, we may not be seeing the same amount of deaths, but doesn't mean we don't have people still abusing or using drugs inappropriately. And we can all agree or disagree in how we treat it in the future. I don't know if, if you can save everybody. I don't know if it's one shoe fits all, but I think that, you know, people like Rockland Cares are doing a great job, but I think they need a little help in hand. And I think it's time that the town recognizes the fact that it's a problem for the community. And we have twenty people who've lost their lives, you know, we're only eighteen thousand people. That's a lot of people in town. It's a lot of people. And not only volunteers, but it's nice to have support or have some funding if you need to get someone into a program or if you need to do things. And there was actually somebody from one of the prescription drugstores in town as well. And I, I didn't know this, but you can actually get under your health insurance, you can go in and get Narcan or other drugs that would offset, reverse the effects of it and you don't need a prescription, it's just charged to your health insurance. So it's some, you know, something to consider. And again, everybody can tell you a story about how they've had a family member, a friend or the fact that they leave children behind or broken families and things like that behind. So it, it's a problem that we have to start to look at and it's one of the things I wanted to bring up tomorrow when we talk with the governor. I know the lieutenant governor's coming in about the compact, but the opioid crisis in Rockland's a big issue, as well as the dam's an issue for us because it's going to affect what we do. So it's something we should consider as a board. So when I went to the meeting, I said I would bring it to the board, so I'm just planting the seeds, so maybe we can discuss it in the future. But we have to at least start thinking about how we can help these people. I know in Europe, they decriminalize it and they treat it as a disease, a sickness versus a crime and that seems to be helping. And I know that in the past, some of our host community agreements with the medical marijuana, we have money set aside that can go, I believe there's one percent that could go to local causes. Maybe this becomes something that could be a local cause. Now, we don't have any facilities open now and people can disagree about marijuana or whatnot, but the fact remains that it's legal. And medical marijuana, we are going to eventually have a site in town that'll be operating and it's going to generate some revenue, not only for the town, but it could also generate some revenue to help address this problem as well as other problems in the town. So something just to consider. Talking about the water, I was copied on the same email and you've got to remember, it's not just Rockland water, it's Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works. They've applied for a grant and I believe the body of the letter was to say that they have projects that are anticipated. So they want to put a moratorium in place in order to know, in order to meet the needs of those projects that are in the pipeline now. And again, it's not so much the amount of water, we would have to expand our permits, but right now part of it's delivery. So part of that grant would be to process more water and, and it's my understanding that that particular well that they're going to draw this, this extra capacity from is the fact that they need to pre-treat it before it enters the system. So that's what the grant's for. And again, whereas Abington and Rockland, everybody's looking for growth. So they want to share that water with both communities equally. So I believe there's a quantity of about a hundred and sixty gallons per day, which would mean about eighty thousand could be allocated towards Rockland projects, eighty thousand could be allocated towards Abington. Now, we know where Union Point coming in, ultimately it's going to be a, a different water source coming in, it's going to be M W R A. The thought process behind if Abington-Rockland were to feed or jumpstart any projects that may happen ahead of time over Union Point in either the Abington or Rockland boundaries, the premise behind it would be that water be utilized for there, but at some point, once M W R A water comes online, that water be redirected for other projects in both communities. So I don't want to give people a mixed notion that there isn't water, there's water, but there's also projects that are in the pipeline and they want to make sure that anybody who's, who's gone through the due diligence of presenting the projects and moving forward a project, that there is actually the ability to, we'll say, feed those projects with the water source. So I think it's a great idea to get them in, we should invite them and if anyone, you know, it's a joint board, if people from Abington want to come over, that's great too. And it'd be nice to, you know, hear where they're coming from and what they want to do. But when we talked about Union Point and expanding it, we recognized the fact that our sewer plant and our water plants both need improvements. The premise behind selling water or sewer services to any of these projects or anything going in was to keep the cost of providing the sewer and water to anyone who's on the system lower while having the improvements done and having it offset or spread throughout all the rate payers. So that was the intention behind it. So we could keep water and sewer costs down. At some point, we need to make those improvements to meet mandates with our permits and then if we look to expand permits for other projects, that's another process. But again, the idea behind it is so that we could keep the rates low. I mean, you get people, I've talked to people and say, well, you're going to sell our water over here or you're going to give it to them over there and I can't water my lawn and those sorts of things. What happens is water's a commodity, it's a resource and yes, it's nice to have a green lawn, I have a well, but sometimes, you know, it's better to be able to flush the toilet, bathe, do all the other, cook, do all the other things you need with potable water versus watering your lawn. So when the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works puts in that there's a, a water band on or a level of water band, so that we're not wasting a resource. I mean, you take other, I mean, you take Texas, Texas is inundated with water right now, yet you go to the west coast, they have wildfires right now, there's not enough water, it's dry. So I mean, it's one of those, we don't know. And Mother Nature, I mean, she can show us, I mean, she's heading towards Florida now and we don't know what's going to happen there. So it's, it's things that you look at nature and nature's powerful, but we're just guests there, you know? So we have to do the best we can with our resources, whether that's water, whether that's land, whether that's trees, all those things. So it's something to consider. And again, I think it's a great idea to get them in here and at least find out where they're coming from with their thought process. But talking with Dan Callahan, that was what I understood.
We can invite them. In the past, they have always invited you to go.
Yeah, I know, because it's a joint thing, but we can invite them and ask them or if they can't, we can invite our commissioners and we can invite Mr. Callahan to give a presentation. Want to remind everybody, school has started, so it's a good thing. My nephew had his first day of kindergarten today, so that was full-time. So he's, he was a little spent from it, but hopefully he does better tomorrow, you know? He was tired, so he didn't like it, but hopefully, hopefully it'll grow on him. And when we talk about hurricanes and whatnot. Well, you talk about weather and things, you know, here we're not challenged with hurricanes. My daughter recently moved to Florida and she's reading, reading and, you know, impacts so far. And if you read the papers, some other people, you know, former residents who were in Texas who got hit by it. So you never know what's going to happen and you can only hope for the best, but you have to recognize that Mother Nature is very powerful and weather's changing. On, on another note, I'd like to mention that there's a lot happening out there with our president and some of the things typically aren't what, you know, a board would take up or do, but there seems to be numerous changes happening around us right now. I mean, we're concerned about water, we're concerned about this, but we have bigger challenges out there right now. I mean, we have things that are taking our country and splitting our country apart right now and policies and whatnot that are kind of all over the board. I mean, I mean, if, if you really wanted to get into a heated discussion, I mean, we could go on for days with that, but I just think people need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, some of the problems we face in town are small, some are bigger. We need to prioritize them, but in the big picture, there's a lot more at stake out there than, you know, some of this, what I, I don't want to say consider non-issues, but in the big overall scheme of things, I mean, it's really minute compared to what could really happen. I mean, we, we've got potential of people, you know, shooting a nuclear weapon that could reach the east coast or, I mean, there's lots of things out there. I mean, the world's, I don't want to say going crazy right now, but the world is certainly changing right now. And, you know, we're up here as a board trying to solve problems in our little community, but there's a lot of things happening around us that, you know, unfortunately, you know, may become bigger problems for us. We've been doing very well in Rockland and I'd like to see that continue, but I want to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, there's other people who are less fortunate and could use some help and there's other people out there that, you know, are part of this community that may not be part of this community in the future, you know, because of changes that are happening out there. And, you know, maybe as a board at some point, we look at a dress and how we'd handle some of those issues, but I'm only pointing that out because, you know, when you go to bed at night, I mean, you hope that you wake up and you're not in five feet of water or you have a wildfire on the back of your property or the fact that you're, you know, wondering if someone's going to shoot something at you, you know? So I can deal with a little bit of seepage of water, a little bit of, you know, maybe a slow flush on the toilet, you know what I mean, in comparison to that, but the other stuff, I don't know. Now that we're back from summer, I think next week, our next meeting, two weeks, it's going to get a little more intense because we're going to have a lot more subjects to deal with. And touching based on community preservation, as Mr. Mullen had mentioned earlier, anybody who's interested, please get an application in for consideration. We only have four slots and I like to see a pool of candidates if at all possible and as Mr. Ryan had mentioned, if we can get some new people to step up. I mean, it's a great opportunity to be part of the town and part of the decision-making moving forward with any projects that might be determined and then brought before town meeting. I mean, community preservation overwhelmingly passed at town meeting and at the ballot, so it's something that's here to stay and it's something that can be good for the town. So if you can be part of that, that'd be great. And as far as, we don't have anything for executive session tonight, so I think I'm done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you all for coming and I apologize for the emotional portion of the meeting, but it is tough, you know, when you have a, a problem that affects you directly like that, so.
It is a big problem.
Well, it is. Thank you all and good night.